Of allegiance and I will ask you to remain standing a few minutes for a moment of silence after the pledge. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
To public, which stands one nation, under God.
For liberty and justice for all. So be.
Do y'all please be seated? Dr. Grant, can you certify the posting of the notice for this meeting?
Yes, I certify it was posted in accordance with the law.
Do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir. We have one public commenter, Dr. John Bergduff.
Come on up. But before you do, let me, let me, I'm new at this. Okay. Can we get a roll call of the trustees? I guess I can do the roll call of trustees to make sure we're, we're here. Well, I'm here. Mike Stomach's here.
Arne O here.
Jim Kane here.
On the remote.
Ernestine Pierce here.
Maryam Sankey here. Yes, sir.
All right. Trustee Wilson. Trustee vote. I think that's all of us. Do we have a core? Great. Dr. Bergduff, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. I am Dr. John Bergduff, president of AFT Lone Star College. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you today. CFO Jennifer Mott presented the broad brushstrokes of the administration's budget proposal back in March. Today, you will be looking more carefully at that proposal as it has evolved over the past few months. The union would simply like to express our appreciation for the attention that is being paid to employee salaries throughout this process. Every aspect of the college budget is important. Facilities, utilities, technology, debt service, reserves, and much more. However, above and beyond everything else, education is primarily a people industry. Payroll is the biggest piece of any college's budget, and each and every employee plays a critical role in the success of our students. Our union calls itself the American Federation of Teachers because we affirm that every school employee, regardless of his or her role, is a teacher of our students in one way or another. Whether that employee is a classroom teacher or a custodian, an advisor or an administrative assistant, all are role models. All by word and example show our students how to be productive and fulfill citizens of our great democracy. All are absolutely essential. We know that rising costs place stress on every aspect of this year's budget in a profound way. Many colleges, universities, and K through 12 systems are responding to that stress by keeping salaries flat, are holding them well below inflation rates. However, however, at Lone Star, both the board and the administration have made it clear that they recognize that those same rising costs also stress the 7,000 or so people who devote their lives to the success of our school. On behalf of all the members of the AFT, I share with you our appreciation that you are prioritizing the well-being of employees as you continue to plan out the budget. Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Chancellor?
So Jennifer, if you want to come on up. So today, board and members in the audience, we're going to present the board budget proposal. And this is a workshop. This is, there is no voting today. So before we get started, I wanted to make sure we recognize Valerie Jones. This is her first meeting as the president of Sci Fair. So welcome. So I have a couple of slides and so is an overview just to remind everybody where we are. But just from a timing standpoint, I want to make sure you know that we have a regular meeting at five. So this meeting will probably last until later than 4:45 or so. So we can tell you right, something like that. It depends. So if we could go to the, again, I'm going to give the first four or five slides, then Jennifer Mott, our CFO, will get into the presentation. Next slide. So just as a reminder, this is where we are right now. We are the largest community college in Texas by almost 10,000 students now. And so we have one of the lowest decreases or one of the lowest declines in the state. The average was about eight percent. We had about four percent. So we're holding our own for the time being. Just, just so you'll know, right now, we're looking at for the fall, we're down about one percent, four percent in student and down about three percent in credit hours. We're going to be talking about projections, but we're projecting that we're going to be even this, this year. That's our goal. So let's move to the next slide. So this is the breakdown on the kind of where we are right now. And these are the trends that we're seeing and you've been seeing in this and some of the redistricting discussions we've been having. But every year, the Hispanic population increases a percentage point. The Anglo population drops a percentage point is our overall enrollment. So this is, and you'll see, I think, another change in the fall where the black population is pretty much holding steady as a percentage, and then the Hispanic population is increasing as a percentage. Next slide. So this is, this is the way we do the budget. So these are our strategic priorities you'll see in the budget presentation toward the end of the presentation that we, every budgeted item, we put in one of these categories. And Jennifer will talk a little bit more about this, but some of the categories you could fit it in this one or you could fit it in that one. But most primarily what we do is think about student success and whether it be on the academic side and how it impacts students and then our employees, of course. And so some of them may belong in one item or a next. It's just kind of a arbitrary decision where we put it. The next slide. So I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer, who will be handling the rest of the presentation. So it's all yours.
Yes. Thank you, trustees, for joining this afternoon. I know it's earlier than our usual board meeting. I appreciate that extra time to really go through at a detailed level the proposed budget with you tonight. This afternoon, actually. So first, I do want to brag on Lone Star College and the finance team throughout all of the campuses, system office, a lot of work goes into a lot of this. And so we have been, you know, to show for that work, Lone Star College has been awarded, it's called the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Lone Star College has received this for 17 consecutive years. So this definitely gives thanks to many people over many years for achieving this. Additional awards also now includes the distinguished budget presentation award that was received for this current year's budget report. Additionally, the Government Treasurers Organization of Texas awarded the certificate of distinction for the, our investment policy, and that is a policy that's adopted by the board annually. And then finally, Standard and Poor's rating of us, this is similar to an individual's credit score, has rated Lone Star College AAA rating, which is the highest possible rating on our general obligation bonds. So I do like to start there that we are starting from a strong foundational base, financial base. Again, too, before I truly get into the details of the proposed budget, I think it's good to start with a knowledge of where Lone Star College currently stands in comparison among the 50 community colleges here in Texas. So Lone Star College, we do have three primary revenue sources, property taxes, tuition and fees, and then state revenue. So a lot of these comparison charts are around those three major revenue sources. So first, looking at taxable value, this compares us to all 50 community colleges. We have a large tax base. So we are the fourth highest among all 50 community colleges in taxable value. Our current year, that value is at 222 billion. This is the, about the value of the residential and commercial properties in our taxing jurisdiction. And right now, the estimates that we've received for next year, which is as of January 1, 2022, is the valuation date, is at 270 billion. The, the tax values, excuse me, yes, the tax base and those taxable values translates into our tax revenues. So here we are, the fifth highest. It's going to come out to be about the same rank when we have that large of a tax base as well. So here, we received this current year, 240 million in tax revenues. And right now, we are estimating for next year's budget, 286 million in tax revenues. Again, here, you can see where we rank among all the 50 community colleges. The state median is at $19 million. So there's definitely a significant difference among the 50 community colleges. All, a piece of this whole formula, right, it's the taxable values times the tax rate that the Lone Star College Board sets equals the tax revenue. So here is the tax rate is Lone Star College has had 10.78 cents as our tax rate since 2017. We've kept it flat there for five, six years, and that has us at the ninth lowest, which actually has gone down. Last year, we were the 10th lowest. So we continue to keep the tax rate conservatively low.
Can you go back one slide and let me just show, so for the board, you can see the difference between the colleges that have resources, the ones on the right, and what a drop off there is from, Colin has, what, 125 or 30 million, then it drops down to a billion, then it drops down to a little over 100 with Santa Santon. But you see that, that the challenge in the state right now is all the colleges to the left of where we are right there, especially that flat line that pretty well goes across. So that's the challenge for the state is how do you equalize the opportunities and the funding really for smaller colleges? That's the big issue right now. And that's going to come up in the legislature also. So go ahead, Tom.
So other elements of the tax rate. So the board sets the tax rate, but also as part of the tax rate, the board also sets our exemptions. This was set several years ago by the board, and we have kept those exemption levels at those same rates. This is, it's not exact, but the closest attempt, I could get to try to show a comprehensive view of all the different exemptions that there are because there are different types. So I did this as tax exemptions as a percentage of the tax basis gross assessed value. So here we are at the ninth lowest. This is, in this comparison, it's going to capture both the level of exemptions set by the community college, and it's also going to pick up the demographics of that community colleges area. But to also show in the different types of exemptions, first, there is a homestead exemption. And here, we are third highest, but there's sort of really just three main groups among the 50 community colleges. There is a group who are at the full 20%. Lone Star, we are among a group that has a 1% homestead exemption, but then there are about 33 community colleges that offer no homestead exemption at all. So this is the homestead exemption. But then there is also the over 65 and disabled exemption, which we have set at 75,000 each, and has us about tied for fourth highest for that exemption among the 50 community colleges. So that's a lot of the comparison charts around property values and property taxes, which is our largest revenue source, which you will see later when I show the details of the proposed budget. Our second largest revenue source is student revenues, which is tuition and fees. So first here is our in district tuition. This is for this past fall, 2020, 2021 comparison. We were the 17th lowest in the district. This past March, the board did vote to increase in district tuition. That will take effect this fall, 2022. You see, so it'll go from 1,080, this is for 12 semester credit hours, increased to 1,152, which is still below the state median for in district tuition. Then here is our out of district tuition. Here you can see we are the fourth highest. And again, here, the board in March also voted to increase this by $12. And part of what drives this significant differential that you see between in district and out of district tuition rates is those, is partially driven by those tax revenues, right? We have still less, but inching closer to half of our revenues come from our local taxpayers. And we have done our best to maintain a philosophy of minimizing how much local taxpayers are subsidizing out of district students. So the more that our tax revenues grow, the larger the differential between in district tuition and out of district tuition should be to offset that difference. So that is part of what is driving the added district rate and putting it at the fourth highest in Texas. Similarly, in out of state, this follows really the same principles and type of calculations. Here we stand at about 10th highest for the out of state tuition rate. But here again, this has the same $12 increase adopted by the board this past March that will take effect this fall. So shifting now to our budget itself, our revenue expenditure budget comparison. The property taxes, like I said, being our largest revenue source is certainly a significant theme without, throughout this entire presentation. So here, in terms of our budget, with tax revenues being the largest source, and this, to do the comparison, this data is about two years old. But in fiscal year 20, it was 42% of our revenues, which put us at the 14th highest. What you're going to see in the proposed budget here is our tax revenues is actually estimated to grow up to 48% of our tax revenues. So I mean, this is a positive strength for Lone Star College. Even the Standard and Poor's rating reports mentions the strong and diverse tax base that we have. And this has certainly been a strength for Lone Star College throughout COVID. When student revenues from tuition and fees declined, the tax revenues was a good offset to that. So this is a strength for us, but also something to be mindful of because it does mean we have this significant exposure in our budget to the local real estate market and what that does with this growing to 48% of our budget. Shifting to the expenditure side of our budget, right, we always have to have both sides, the revenue and expenditures. So again, this comparison is back in fiscal year 2020. The expenditures, this is per full-time student equivalent. So pretend the students take 12 semester credit hours. They don't, but this is how it allows us to have an apples to apples comparison. Here, the expenditures per full-time student equivalent, we were at the 21st lowest, relatively close to the state median, which is where we have been trying to get to. The board did adopt a board policy back in 2018 where you set a goal for us to reach expenditures per student of about the state median. And you look, we have been moving in that direction. In fiscal year 20, we were the 21st lowest, but the year before that, in FY19, we were the 17th. And I, if I remember right, the year prior to that, I believe we were around the 13th lowest. So we have been moving our way up this chart towards that state median, which is the goal that the board policy set. And as I said, this is, this data is also two years behind. So my guess is that we have moved closer to that state median since then. So like I said, that is, my intention was to set sort of a foundation of comparison to, to have a perception of where Lone Star College stands within Texas and among the 50 community colleges. Then moving into the proposed budget itself. Right, this budget is for next fiscal year, which is September 1, 2020, through August 31, 2023. We have to build it on assumptions. So I like to make clear what those assumptions are that's built into the, the proposed budget. The first standing principle that we operate on is that we use business principles and practices in our operations. We also stay conservative in our estimates of revenue and expenses. In this particular budget, there is an assumption that credit hours will remain flat in fiscal year 2023. I will shortly here have another slide showing some more detail on that. There, I do want to highlight that this current fiscal year 2022, we also assumed flat credit hour growth this year, but we did not have flat. We did decline. Right? And so we, that has been covered in the monthly financial reports. As we've seen, the variance in student revenues come in below what was budgeted. We made operational budget adjustments along the way to adjust for that. So I do want to note that we are again assuming flat with the same operational intention of once we see what actually, what the actual outcome is, if it's positive or if it's negative, we can make the operational adjustments at that time. So we are again going to assume flat in the, in the budget. We, of course, want to build the budget in a, in a way of financial strength to maintain our AAA rating and to maintain cash reserves of at least 16 to 20%. Some additional assumptions. First, with intuition and fees. Again, this was something that the board did actually vote on back in March because we, that was the timing necessary to make sure it's ready to go for registration opening for the fall term. But here, following the board policy that was adopted back in 2018, a goal of that policy was to increase the percentage of our revenues coming from tuition and fees, right? I mentioned the property taxes now growing to 48% of our revenues. Our intention pre-COVID had been to grow student revenues to a larger percentage of our revenues, reducing that reliance on the property tax side. Now, of course, our progress towards that goal has definitely gone in the wrong direction with COVID, but still towards that same policy intention is why we had proposed and the board adopted the increase in tuition and fees. So that approved increase is included in this budget.
So Jennifer, I think for the board members that are not, that were not here before the, maybe when we passed this in 2018 or 19, the goal was about 37 and a half percent, I think, for each category. In other words, students would pay tuition and fee revenues would be about 37 and a half, and assessed value or taxes would be about 37 and a half. And with our enrollments flattening out after COVID, and then with assessed value going up, then we've got a huge gap in there, which it's just, we, probably at another time, we need to discuss whether or not that's a reasonable goal or not. It sounds nice, but I'm not sure how we get there without massive tuition hikes, and that's not exactly what I think we need to be doing. So. Yeah, yeah. Well, state funding, we've been assuming it's going to be around 20% of our total budget. And that number, though, we had been assuming was going to be declining slightly as a, not so much in real dollars, but as a percentage of our actual budget. And we, we're having to revisit all that because enrollment across the state slowed down. So it's changing all those numbers. With assessed value going up, we have an odd situation here with assessed value going up and everything else declining and different, different numbers. So it's something that we'll be talking about in the future with the board. That's a board policy that we've been trying to reach, but it's, it's difficult to get to right now into the circumstances. So.
Yes. And so with that goal certainly being difficult to reach at the moment, still working to whatever extent we can towards it. That was what led to the proposed increases in tuition and fees that were previously approved, and also includes in this budget, we are assuming the tax rate remains flat at the 10.78 cents that we have kept flat since 2017. And regarding that, I will have additional details here shortly as well. The state allocation, yes, that's our third largest revenue source. That is, has been about 21% for next year's budget. It's estimated to be about 20% of our revenues. There's really no change there in this year since we are in the second year of the biennium. Last year, the legislative session is when they set what the allocation would be for this current budget year and next. So that's where there's really no changes there. Next year is when we will certainly see the results of the new session. The other significant budget assumption here is the compensation adjustments. The additional detail on the compensation was talked about at length at the February budget retreat when we talked about the proposed cost of living adjustments that would be across the board for employees as well as adjustments to the various pay structures. So that compensation adjustment is definitely included in this proposed budget, and you'll see those numbers shortly. So with that, those assumptions here I have for you are proposed FY 2023 budget. There's definitely some key items in this proposed budget that is new. The first being within our tax rate. As I mentioned, 10.78 cents is where Lone Star College's tax rate has been since 2017. And we are proposing to keep that flat at 10.78 cents. The adjustment we'd like to propose is within that 10.78 cents, there's two components, and the board does vote and adopt on each separate tax rate within the total. The first is the maintenance and operations rate. That rate has been eight cents out of the 10.78 cents. And then there is the debt service tax rate. That also, that has been at 2.78 cents. Those are the two components, and they've been there since 2017. With assessed values growing, estimated to grow so strongly this year, we are proposing to lower the maintenance and operations rate from eight cents to 7.56. Now, these proposed rates, they are based on estimates. We will have to refine the exact numbers come August when we received the official certified rolls. But from our estimates, it looks like just shy of half a penny reduction to the maintenance and operations rate. But we take that amount and increase the debt service rate by that amount from 2.78 cents to 3.22 cents. That's what would keep the total rate flat. And what we would do with this is those additional funds going into the debt service fund, we do have bonds with our debt that we are able to pay off early. We could pay off 18.6 million of debt earlier than scheduled. And over the course of time, this would save us 11.3 million in interest payments. So here, the thought is, is with this very strong assessed value growth, what we'd like to do with it is pay off debt early. So that is included in the proposed budget. Additionally, wanting to spend a little bit more detailed time here on the credit hour projections because I mentioned in this current year's budget, we assumed flat and then we did decline. So here we are for FY 23, again proposing to assume flat in the budget. So here, we do have two sets of projections and both have different viewpoints within the projections. First is from the various campuses, and for them, this is a combination of what they expect to happen and their personal stretch goals. So from those projections, system wide, that would be a positive credit hour growth of 1.5%. I also have from analytics and institutional reporting, our Lone Star Colleges air team, they have been working on building a model to try to project credit hour growth. This is just for the fall 22. It's not for the whole academic year. But I did want to share with everyone their first go at these projections. I do hope to share them again in the fall to see how it stands up. But from their projections, and they use variables that they use include dual credit students, ISD yield rates, and rates of new and continuing students. So in their model, it is showing system wide a decline of 1.2%. And right now, that looks like it's being driven by new students, lower rates of new students who are 21 and over, and lower rates of returning students.
So before you go on, I didn't want to, I don't even have to look at the presidents to know. They're all looking at these numbers.
They have not seen these numbers.
We don't know. We hope you. I mean, looking at Houston North. I see that. So we knew that we can look at the demographics because with our analytics, we know how many ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders. We've known that, that we were going to have a slight decline in the number of graduating seniors. That's one issue. But then we attract other people when the economy, normally what happens when the economy, like when COVID, and we have a problem, then enrollments go up. It's just COVID. It's just changed, just flipped things around. We'll see. We have a long way to go. There's a lot of work that goes on. And then we've really stepped it up in the marketing side and the outreach side. And so we'll see. This is, we're trying to be reasonable in our projection so that we don't over budget or under budget that much. That's the reason we had before this, before we had all these numbers, we had. We had before this, before we had all these numbers, we had projected zero growth. And then if we we can handle it either way, if we grow, that's great, if we don't grow, we can still handle that, so. Right now, we'll see, so I presidents don't. We want you to do better, how's that, but.
Chair Stone, could I ask a question? Do you mind taking questions during the presentation? I'm struggling with this just a little bit because as I look at the projections. I recognize that the student population is not the same at each campus. So how can I very simply look at what is one percent growth that Cyfair. Compared to twenty percent growth that Houston North versus point eight percent at Kingwood because populations are not the same, but these numbers are the same.
Yes, that's fair, and if you don't mind after this, I can certainly send you that the the total numbers, the actual projected credit hours. Because yes, I've done this on a percentage basis, but the size of each campus is very different, so Cyfair being our largest campus. The same percent or same one percent there is a much larger number of credit hours than a one percent would be for Houston North, so absolutely correct. Obviously, trying to keep this simple, I didn't put those numbers here on the slide, but I have them and I can certainly send them to you.
Question at all, it's trying to help me to understand and how do you account for the online college within this because we don't see online.
Right, right now, that is not factored here because we don't have a FY twenty three will be the first year of online. So without a single data point, right, that is probably will be in addition to what is here. But a lot of this is trending based on the existing campuses and yes, we did not have historical data to use for online.
So we can get you the numbers, projected numbers of enrollments, for example, Cyfair with one percent would probably be twenty. Twenty three, maybe twenty four thousand and then online, we're projecting two thousand. And so and and yes, a one percent growth over at Cyfair would be about two hundred and thirty students, twenty percent growth over at. Houston North would be. Forty eighty, let's see, you've got twenty four, twenty seven hundred students, what are you projecting? That'd be about forty. How many students are you projecting to grow roughly? Forty forty students, yeah, so we'll get you that number. We just do, we do this for, we actually debated about whether to put this slide in there, we know what it means, it doesn't. But we have the numbers for you. You know, a minus six or minus four or something at one place could be a minus one at another place, I mean, so.
Jennifer, this is trustee Pierce, I'd like to have those numbers as well.
Yes, I can I can share that with the whole board.
Thank you.
I just have to say that the analytics projections only only as good as the assumptions made to make the projections.
Right.
There are other factors that may factor in to whether someone goes to school, doesn't go to school. So I guess I would say this is the best guess right now. And it's true, I think the the presidents should know, you should know. And you know, that's where I'd gather information for a more precise, let's call it, projection, my opinion.
And part of the intent of this slide was to show the uncertainty that is there at this point in time and. I have to build a budget off of something, some numbers, some assumption, so this is where we have chosen to assume that flat change in credit hours. But operationally, we have plans for what we would do in either direction. You will see in a later slide when I itemize some of the budget additions, one of them is a growth contingency, for example, so if there is growth. We of course want to make sure there's enough funding to fund those sections. So there is a growth contingency there, but then if that growth doesn't happen, then we won't need to use that contingency. And similarly, I mean, during COVID and currently this year, we have operationalized. Making budget adjustments if there is not growth along the way, once we see the actual outcomes.
And don't get me wrong, I don't mean that as a criticism, I'm just saying that when you start projecting, you have more than two variables. You know, it gets pretty hairy, so you know, it's a it's a good guess and you got to do it for the budgetary purposes, yeah.
Well, right now, just to give an example, we're down about three percent in credit hours, last week we were up in, we're about three percent, so. Between inflation. The economy, we just got a number of factors, which and it's still, I think we're eighty days out before school starts, so. And again, you're going to see our marketing efforts increasing throughout the summer, but it's by design. We are in a base year, by the way, for the state, this is a really important year for us and the way they measure this is they'll take the enrollment basically from March one to March one. Then they compare that with what everybody else in the state's doing and that's assuming they don't change the formula for next year and I'm not, I'm not thinking that's going to happen for next year. So this base period is really important to us compared to what everybody else does. So if we end up about even and the other colleges are losing enrollment, which is where they are right now, then. We're actually in pretty good financial shape relative to the state. So again, you'll see a lot of marketing effort on our part all across the board, social media, radio, TV, ads. So our intent is to keep us in front of students all the way through the years, not just this fall, it's this summer. It started in March, so it was really the summer, the fall and the spring enrollments are really important to us. It's important that we we do the best we can, so and the presidents all know that, I mean, we all, we all know what the situation is, so.
Yes, I have a question, um. I'm a little bit confused, when we talk about online. Is online a campus or is it a college? What is, I don't remember approving a college being a board member, but is the online, is it a campus, help me understand what we have here. Sometimes people say campus, sometimes they say college, I need a, you know, a concrete answer, is the online a campus or is it a college, what is it?
Is it, I didn't hear that.
Online, the online school, I mean, people refer to it as an online campus, sometimes I hear online college. I don't remember approving as a trustee an online college, I just want clarification, what is it, an online campus, is it an online college? What is online at Lone Star?
It's a campus, just like any of the rest of them are.
Okay, okay, that's what I'm, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
So with those. Those two significant items within this budget. Going into the summary of the proposed budget itself, so first here is the sources of funds, which I've definitely already touched upon a few times. This is where you see that the property taxes, right, just a couple of years ago, when we set that board policy in two thousand and eighteen, local taxes was at forty two percent. So this has definitely grown and net estimating it to be forty eight percent next year. Student revenues, this is tuition and fees, we're estimating this to be twenty nine percent of our revenues next year. And this is factoring in the fact that the board voted to increase tuition and fees. But that's driven by the flat credit hour change that we have assumed and the declines that we've had since COVID. So that's where that revenue source as a percentage of our budget is is down from the thirty down to twenty nine percent. Back in two thousand and eighteen, it was at thirty two percent. Then additionally, the third largest revenue source is the state funds, right, and that that has has been at twenty one percent, next year is estimated to be at twenty one percent. And that has hovered around twenty twenty two, twenty one, twenty percent is about where the state revenue portion of our revenues has been. So each of these three revenue sources, I'm definitely going to get into more details on each. First, starting with those property taxes, like I said, that this property taxes being such a large portion of our revenues is a major theme of this presentation. This is where you can see the assessed values by county. And the growth rate in those assessed values, this current year, we're at a growth rate of six point six percent. And I mentioned a very healthy growth rate estimated for next year and yes, that rate is at fourteen percent is what we're estimating. This is based on estimated values that we received from the appraisal district back in April. The official certified rolls we received from the appraisal districts in August. So again, any budget, we do have to have assumptions built into that, but at fourteen percent. This is Montgomery County is where the growth has been strongest at eighteen percent in Montgomery County and twelve point six percent in Harris County. So Harris County, right, is at about seventy one percent of our tax base and Montgomery is at just shy of twenty nine percent of our tax base. So from those assessed values, right, then you you apply the tax rate that the board adopts and then that gets you the tax revenue. So the line here is what shows you the tax rate and the bars, the blue and the red, so the blue is the maintenance and operations portion that I've mentioned. And the red is the debt service portion, shows you the total revenues that we are estimating. But here again is where it shows you that we Lone Star College has kept the tax rate flat at ten point seven eight cents. Since two thousand and seventeen and we are proposing the total rate to stay at that ten seven eight cents for next fiscal year. And then did also want to share the fifteen year history of the tax rate where Lone Star College has and continues to have. A cultural value of keeping this tax rate relatively low compared to other community colleges in the state. So like I said, property that was property taxes, our largest revenue source, our second largest revenue source is student revenues. Again, this is tuition and fees for both credit and non-credit programs. Financially speaking, in terms of the impact of COVID on our revenues, this is the slide where you see where the majority of that impact has occurred. There's certainly been expenditure impacts, but in terms of the recurring revenues that supports our budget, this is where that impact is. You see where pre-COVID, we were at the high of one hundred and twenty seven million. With the declines in enrollments and credit hours, you see the drop in these student revenues. And modest increase in those revenues this current fiscal year and the increase that you see up to one hundred and twenty three million for next fiscal year. Since we're assuming flat change, zero percent change in credit hours, the entirety of this increase is driven by that increase in tuition and fees. So we still have, even with that increase in tuition and fees, we still have not gotten these revenues back up to where they were pre-COVID. Certainly still quite important to our budget at twenty percent of our revenue state funds, this is the third largest revenue source. And here shows you the different components of that revenue source. So in the current biennium allocation that we've received, you can see the majority of that does come. From the contact hour formula funding at sixty eight million. And then the next most significant piece comes from student success metrics at fourteen million. Now, the student success metrics, even though they are definitely a smaller portion of the whole thing. You can see, though, that over time, that is the direction that the legislature seems to be moving in, where that share of the whole bucket has increased over time. So that's the picture of the revenue side of the proposed budget. Getting into details, I've shown a lot of charts for a proposed budget, there's been a lot of charts, now I'm going to start with the numbers. I know there is a lot here on this slide showing the revenue budget, but so there is a couple of points that I want everyone to see and take away from this slide. First is that our revenues in this current fiscal year, our current fiscal year right now of two thousand and twenty two. We are forecasting revenues of three hundred and ninety seven million. For fiscal year two thousand and twenty three, our forecasted revenues based on all the assumptions that I have outlined is four hundred and twenty two million. This is an increase in revenues of twenty five million. The other takeaway I'd like everyone to notice from here, though, too, is as I've mentioned. We have been making operational budget adjustments along the way as we go. This current year, our revenues are about five million less than what we had originally budgeted for, the budget that this board adopted last August. Our revenues are five million less than that. If we had done nothing, we would have had to make up that five million out of these new revenues, leaving us twenty million and not twenty five to work with for new items. But because we did make those operational budget adjustments along the way as we went. And also scrubbed any contingency unused contingency budgets, you can see here, we actually managed to free up. Out of our current year operating budget, five point five million. So we did actually manage to slightly more than offset the. The shortfall in revenues that we saw this current fiscal year, so that does leave us with total new resources. For FY twenty twenty three of twenty five point five million. That's our total new resources to work with towards any new budget additions. And that's where I'm going to certainly go to next in more detail is what those budget additions are. But the quick summary point there here is those proposed budget additions is the twenty eight, basically twenty nine million in budget additions. You can see then that there is a difference between those new resources and the proposed budget additions. That difference of three and a half million is a proposed use of our cash reserves in this fiscal two thousand and twenty three budget. And the quick comment there is that our cash reserves is very healthy, I am forecasting those to be up at around thirty percent. Ending this year and into next fiscal year, our goal is sixteen to twenty percent. So we do have a plan, though, to spend down those reserves over about the next five years.
Can you talk about how much thirty percent is a dollar amount?
Yes, so for this current fiscal year, I am estimating us to end at about one hundred and twelve million in cash reserves. Next year, it might get up to around one hundred and thirty million.
So we're just as a reminder, Standard and Poor's and JP Morgan recommended that we have twenty percent and. Again, because of the reductions and the savings and just general COVID, we, you know, we cut budgets, we froze budgets, we had the early retirement plan. So that's the reason we built up the reserves and then the stimulant, and we weren't even counting on the stimulus money at that time, we were just making our own plans. So that's the reason we ended up with a surplus, it's because of all those decisions we made and then we've been able to backfill the budget with the stimulus money. And the stimulus money, we have to have that spent by May of twenty three, so we've got another semester, two semesters. Another half year, almost a full year to spend the money, so we're in, we're in pretty good shape for the up until then. So a lot of our budget thinking is we need to be prepared and start making the shift over. Wean ourselves off the stimulus money and that's that's reflected in the budget, which he's going to talk about in a few minutes. So we'll do some of that this year and then next year, where you really start seeing us moving off the stimulus money. And then the following year will be totally off the stimulus money, so that's part of the plan, though, that's the reason we have money in the reserves. And so you're going to see a spin down on the reserves to really replenish what we were using for COVID. So COVID money basically just bought us time until we can get back on our, get the enrollment numbers back where we should be, so.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. When you say spin down, you're not saying spin down to zero, you're saying spin down to the goal.
Yes, spend down to the goal, yes, absolutely, spend it down to the goal. So yes, with these reserves. Yes, on the one hand, we have a very strong reserve right now and that that is great, over the next five years, the two. Not insignificant financial challenges that we do have to meet is first, yes, absorbing COVID initiatives that we've already started and want to continue. Absorbing that into our operational budget and then once we do spend the reserves down to the twenty percent, at that point in time, we need to make sure that our revenues. Are fully sustaining our expenditure level and that we don't have a recurring gap like this three point five million in our budget.
In our planning model, by year five, we still have twenty percent reserve, twenty percent, which at that time would be a hundred and. Roughly a hundred and thirty or forty million, something like that, if projecting on our budget, just regular growth, so that's five years out, though, which is. And that depends on inflation, the economy growth, what the legislature does.
This is, it's hard to to project too precisely, but as we spend down, when we. Get to the twenty percent. Get to the twenty percent of reserve uh goal. Do you think we might have cash flow, uh enough cash flow to start putting additional money into reserves going forward? Or is it a little too early to, to project that?
Um, at this point, I would say it's too early, right? I think we do need those five years. To both absorb the cost of the COVID initiatives into our operating budget and get ourselves back to a place of balanced revenues and expenditures.
So part of our thinking, not to. We, we're not thinking negatively, we're just trying to think about everything. Um, if we have a recession and property values drop, then we've got another issue to deal with, so. We're, we're trying to be thoughtful and conservative and yet meet our own needs. Just uh, we're thinking a lot about what could happen, what we, you know, kind of worst case, best case and kind of operating in the middle. We need to be prepared though. I think that's, that's what we're thinking about, so.
Let me just say to the trustees, I mean, questions are welcome. This is a discussion. This is a workshop for, for us. So be free to ask your questions if you have them. And uh, you know, the, the whole idea of having a five-year job budget and being. Project out is to plan, plan on the best assumptions you have today. The reason we do this each year because things change. We've seen dramatic changes over the last two, three years, that your, your team and the whole team, everybody here. Has adapted to significantly well, I mean excellent in my book. So keep that in mind, that this, this is a rolling plan. And it has to be reevaluated based on whatever the economic and conditions are at the time uh we, we do the planning. Uh, so it's, it's not going to be precise. But we need to come up with a, a solid budget that we have to approve come, come September, right?
Chairman Stone, I think I, if I may, I have just a brief question.
Go ahead.
Chairman Stone, I just have a brief question.
Yes, go ahead.
In here, oh yes, so I think um trustee Silo, you sort of allotted to this and. Kind of answered my question on this, but just to kind of double check, I know that pre-COVID. Um, what was our um, our reserves roughly, not in percentage, but more like dollars?
Um, so our reserves pre-COVID, so I apologize, usually I do think of it in the percentages. Uh, we were, were around sixteen or seventeen percent, which I think is around sixty or to sixty five million. Um, is what we were at pre-COVID and we were at um, between, usually between sixteen and seventeen percent.
Okay, so sixteen or seventeen million, you said?
Yes, is where we were pre-COVID.
Okay.
That's a percent of the budget, right? Which would have been.
Yeah, I mean in dollars, not percentage.
Right, in dollars, uh, I believe that was around between sixty and sixty five million.
Okay, sixteen sixty, so that's a pretty healthy reserve amount, correct?
Yes, uh, the recommended goal for up to us uh was between sixteen and twenty percent. So at that time, we were at the low end of what our goal was, but we were at the goal.
Okay, and then after COVID?
Is so after COVID, yes, with a lot of the uh way that we responded to COVID. Um, right, we responded to COVID not knowing we would get the grant funds and between all of those operational decisions. That's where we are now at near, nearing thirty percent, which is one hundred and twelve million. Uh, so yes, our cash reserves after COVID has increased significantly.
And so do you see after in a couple of years to year, do you see that we will return to our conservative? Type of seventeen, sixteen percent in reserves?
I think personally, after what we've seen between Hurricane Harvey and COVID, my preference would be to keep it. At the higher end of the goal, at the twenty percent rather than the sixteen. Uh, but I do see us in our strategic planning over the next five years. Yes, using our cash reserves uh right now, if it's up at around thirty percent. Uh, right now, my estimates are five years from now, it will be down around nineteen or twenty percent.
And Jennifer, just to put that in, you know, real dollars. So right now we have reserves about one hundred and twelve million, if I'm not far, is that correct? But by the end of next year, it should be around one hundred and thirty million, is that correct?
Uh, that's currently what I'm estimating.
Estimating, then, then there's a, there's the spin down, so at the end of uh the fifth year. It's about ninety nine million, right? And that's about twenty percent, so it gives a relative look at what the projections are. I mean, to me, it helps and think, I know you think in percentages, so it's probably good for you. I gotta think in dollars.
Yes, and I think of it in percentages because of course, the overall size of our budget also grows over the course of those five years. So we want to grow the reserves with the growth in the budget, so that's generally why I think of it as a percentage.
I, I just want to remind the board that we had fifty two million dollars in damage in the hurricane. And while I'm not saying we're expecting flooding and hurricane, uh tornado, but we know what could happen. And we have to fund that. We moved forward with our own money initially, waiting on FEMA and insurance and everybody else, we. Um, that's a loss of revenue for us when we, I mean, so we, we're not, when we're thinking about the amount of money that we might need and how much is too much. Plus, uh, that allows us the triple A rating, which is helping our, it helps our bond rating and our credit rate and the dollars when we've been refunding things. We get a lower interest rate, it's just like your household, so. I'm not sure how much is too much, but twenty has been our general goal to try to reach. And so that's what we're planning on in the five year, knowing that that. I mean, we'll be giving you regular updates and we know, I mean, we just got these benchmarks in there. Once we get the assessed values, once we decide what the state's going to do, once we see what inflation looks like. And you're seeing the same things we're seeing and uh whether it's eight percent one month and then how that. It just depends, so, but we, we're trying to calculate all that in and trying to be. Conservative in our expenses, but making sure that we got enough to ride through anything that we need to ride through, including the possible recession. If we, if we lost five percent of our assessed value, which we know could happen because it happened before. Then, then we have a problem there, so, okay.
And I think that's one of the questions after here, I just wanted, you know, one of the points of my question was to make sure that we keep a really healthy reserve. And I think um Jennifer has done a great job in that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Stone? Yes, go ahead. Yeah, you know, I know you encouraged us to, to kind of chime in and uh, since this is a um, you know, discussion. I um, you, you do mention the two thousand eighteen policy, you know, board policy. Uh, where uh, you know, how we identified what tuition and fees, what percentage, as a percentage of budget. And, and um, I know there was a healthy discussion among trustees at the time. Um, you know, um, whether we should increase taxes or, you know, increase tuition, that's always that, that question. And of course, um, I just bring it up only to, to, because it, it, in some ways, it could be our, it, it is, at least it was for me. A way for me to, you know, inform my decisions in terms of whether. Um, you know, whatever we do, because I mean, it's going to be a lot of calculation, a lot of benchmarks you talked about and a lot of. Especially with the economy, you know, uncertainties and stuff. But I, I just wanted to raise that point because I think as a board, um, it's important to understand, and you know, and if you can facilitate that as well as to. You know, helping us along the way, um, you know, I know you, last time you mentioned why it's not good to defend, depend too much on a. Um, on the value because of what he just mentioned, the property values and stuff, because you never. And uh, so, but I still don't have the, I still don't know the answer, but it's, it's good to, to maybe have a discussion about that in, in us as we move forward.
Okay, so this is uh definitely the detail behind the proposed revenue budget and you can see, like I said. Um, the sort of punchline of this slide is that bottom number, three point five million use of reserves. You can see that number again now on the expenditure side of the budget, right? Both sides have to link up with each other, uh so. Here, again, so first thing I'd like to mention here, uh, just for some awareness is usually we talk in broad terms about our budget. Um, but we have our operating budget, which is generally what we're referring to. That's where the bulk of our obviously spending occurs. But we do have other funds that other activities occur in. Uh, so this total budget that I'm presenting is across all of these funds. Uh, so first mentioning that, uh, but then also having sort of the big picture of how. This proposed budget is shaping up is it is again, the FY two thousand twenty three revenue budget estimated at four hundred and twenty one point nine million. And then this is how that would be spread out among these different funds. Uh, and then in terms of the budget additions, again, right, the bulk of our work does occur in the operating fund. And so we have detailed out those budget additions by strategic priority and that's what I will get into next year. Um, but the total of the proposed budget additions is the twenty eight point nine, basically twenty nine million. And now what you'll see in the following slides actually is that is the net amount. We do have forty million worth of budget additions, but then of course, we are always looking for opportunities to. To reduce areas of the budget, so we do have another eleven point seven million in budget reductions that I will be itemizing here. And that's what gets us to this net increase in the expenditure budget of twenty nine million. So that's a recommended expenditure budget of four hundred and twenty five point four million. And again, with that, the difference between that expenditure and revenue budget being that three point five million. So next, I certainly do want to get into uh sharing some of the items that we are proposing to add to the budget. Uh, and we do show this by strategic priority. Uh, I know that was a slide back towards the beginning, but we have. Uh, these prime main, these strategic priorities, financial responsibility and accountability. Student success, academic and workforce program quality and culture. This is typical for Lone Star College, that culture is the largest share of each year's new budget additions. Primarily being because culture is where we put compensation. Um, and as we've mentioned for FY two thousand twenty three budget, the compensation adjustments for the cost of living. Uh, considerations is a significant part of this proposed budget. So getting into each of these, first is the academic and workforce program quality. And I will say this too, with these strategic priorities, a lot of these new budget initiatives. Uh, could easily be uh under multiple categories, right? So at the end of the day, we do pick what category they seem to fit best, but it is good when a lot of our new budget initiatives. Fit multiple strategic priorities. Here, because I like my totals to match, I pick one. Um, and a key item here is academic and workforce program quality is where I have placed a lot of our facility uh dollars. Um, we, I could have easily also argued for putting that under financial responsibility. But my thought here is Lone Star College uh takes pride in providing students when they come here for their programs. Um, top-notch facilities, clean, well-functioning facilities. So you can see the largest item in here is uh the operational costs of brand-new facilities. So for this, we have Montgomery, there's a new student services building uh that has opened up for students. Kingwood has a new healthcare building, so these new buildings that offer academic and workforce programs to students. Uh, is uh the largest item in this category. Um, below that, still related to facilities is repair and replacement, growing that, this is growing that total budget, right? Even right now, this past couple of weeks, we've had some challenges with chillers over at North Harris. And sometimes the temperatures have gone up a little bit in those buildings. We certainly don't want students at uncomfortable temperatures in their buildings. Um, so it is important for us to prioritize that repair and replacement. Both for uh the facilities and you see further down too, in a similar spirit, workforce equipment replacement, so for example.
So this is not uh the total about, the total budget, this is new money that we're adding, so we're approaching six million square feet. So again, on R and R money, it's like your house. We, you're not really saving money there, you're just delaying whatever expenditure, if something's wrong. So we're trying to get money back in the budget for R and R money. And um, so we can keep our facilities the way we'd like to keep them. So the total budget for R and R is what, five point six, seven million?
Five point five million, would be the total budget for our facilities R and R, yes. Um, here is also, I had mentioned previously, the growth contingency. So for our academic and workforce quality, if we do have a growth in credit hours for students. We can make sure we can continue to provide those programs. Culture, as I mentioned, uh, this is definitely the largest category here. Um, total of almost twenty three million um in this proposed FY twenty three budget for culture. Um, almost the entirety of this going to the personnel compensation increases. Um, and this is right back from the February board budget retreat, we had talked about a four percent cost of living. Adjustment that's across the board for all employees and then there's another four percent adjustments to payback structures. Um, which will uh also benefit um many of our employees, uh but will also help us attract. Um, employees as we hire. So that is what is included, the bulk of what's included in the twenty one point six million uh for compensation increases. Um, in that same vein, and now this is under financial responsibility and accountability. This is the first time ever I've done this, budgeting for an inflation contingency, right? Of our total budget, about seventy five percent of it is personnel. But that doesn't mean we have twenty five percent, that's not personnel, that's goods and services, that's us buying utilities, that's us buying supplies. Contracts for services um with inflation, right? For the same reason that we uh, you know, are valuing that cost of living consideration for our employees. We also have to be prepared for increases in the, in the goods and services that loans our college purchases. Uh, so not wanting to be unprepared for that, um, this is, uh, so this is four percent of. Uh, that portion of our budget, so twenty five percent of our budget for goods and services. Four percent of that is what this inflation contingency is set at. Um, and we will use this uh as we actually experience the um. Increases in the same things we are purchasing today during the year, for example, we are already seeing utilities going up. I, I imagine many households are already seeing that as well, so we do as well.
Before you go on, could I uh jump in? Sure, somebody said you just asked questions.
Absolutely, sir, go right ahead.
Um, first of all, that's really smart. Thank you for doing that, because we're all looking at increased, increased cost in almost everything. Haven't seen anything go down either in my home or in my business, either one, but I'm sure you won't either. Um, how did you account for this in the past? Did you just have to rob Peter to pay Paul, for lack of a better term?
Honestly, with, in the past, with inflation being two or if not one percent. We really didn't really address it at all, because it was small enough that it felt more like noise in the background.
Okay.
Um, so we haven't had to address it before, so that's why I say this is the first time ever I have put into the budget an inflation contingency.
Now, since you've been here at Lone Star, have you had inflation uh at, at the level that we're looking at going forward?
No, no, um, certainly not. I think I started Lone Star College two thousand seventeen. Um, until recently, I don't know that it was ever much above two percent, maybe two and a half tops. But I would say, I want to say it was more like one, one and a half percent for the past five years.
Um, not, not to make too much of a deal about this, but I just really compliment you and. The administration on thinking like this, because there's just, I mean, I just dealt with HCAT's budget yesterday, this is all fresh on my mind. And there's just, it's so difficult to plan. You know, revenues on one side, but which you kind of can guess, but the expenditure side is just a wild card. Uh, you talk about insurance, I mean, healthcare costs, you talk about employees. You, you know, you mentioned the culture and money for new buildings and how we want to have. Uh, facilities that students feel good at. Well, you're a top workplace now, you want your, and you do, this is not to remind you, but I mean. It, you've made it a focus to have your employees also feel good about where they work and that's an attraction. So there's so much that goes into this, it absolutely is huge, so thank you.
Thank you. This is the first time we put in my, this is, I'm finishing thirty eight years, we've not put inflation ever in the budget. And that came from her and her staff somewhere, which I, actually, I've been talking to other college chancellors. And they're going, what a great idea. I said, well, okay, you can give us credit for it if you want to, but it came from, or at. And that the way things are looking and what we're hearing is that inflation could be at four percent for the next. Perceivable future, so we're factoring that in, in our five-year, in our five-year modeling, so it's just a reality. So I think we need to account for it though, and if we don't, if we, if it, if it's less than that, then we're in good shape, so.
Put it in the reserves.
And I mean, and this could be a good lesson learned, yes, I've added this to, right, the five-year strategic planning, so even out in year five. When I, where I put the inflation assumption back down to two percent, I still have this contingency. So where we didn't do this previously, even if it's that lower level, uh, this could be something that we continue going forward. When hopefully in. when hopefully inflation goes back down.
Well, I'm gonna think about it, while I'm thinking about it, before we forget, I, I did want to recognize your staff, right? You're gonna, I don't want you to forget that. There's a lot of work, an incredible amount of work that goes on behind the scenes, and a number of them are sitting out here in the audience, it's um, so. Thank you. You want to tell everybody who they are so they know, so that the board knows, before we get away?
Uh, yes, please, I have uh Maura Capper here, uh, she's an executive director of financial planning and analysis. I have Nissa Peterson, she's in in the finance area. I have Mary Anderson is uh also on the budget team. Um, Diana Garcia is uh here, I believe, here too, uh, and that's really, I do, I am happy to introduce them specifically to you, but that's also just to name a few. There's many others who aren't here who put a lot of work into this, and it's also not just my direct team. When we build the budget, I mean, we are engaging vice presidents, presidents, deans, doms, throughout the whole system, all put a lot of work into building the budget. So thank you to everybody, system-wide, vice chancellor's offices, certainly too.
I mean, we start this back and we'll start having discussions right after the new year, starting in September, and then we just run through the whole scenario, a lot of different iterations on the budget, starting almost a year out, that's just, uh.
Yes. So, uh, I do definitely want to get through everything, but also be respectful of time. So going to the next category of our strategic uh priorities, student success. This is where you see a lot of the COVID initiatives, right? It was around student success where a lot of that happened, so a lot of this is um, the work uh Dr. Kashvala is doing for LSC Online, but also increasing just online learning support in general. Um, also working the expanded mental health services. Uh, we have uh from the the Saks COC efforts, a quality enhancement plan being worked on there. So there's certainly student success efforts uh being added to this budget as well. Uh, this is where I mentioned, there is forty point seven million worth of new budget initiatives. Um, and I know, I definitely recognize that's a large number. Uh, but I wanted to make sure, right, we have that inflation contingency that we just discussed and those compensation increases, um, primarily driven by inflation, included in this forty million dollar number. So twenty-six million of that uh is uh driven by inflation. So it's really fourteen point three million, that is new budget initiatives. Areas where, where we are hoping to either add uh new services or expand services, improve services, um, is the fourteen point three million of that. Which I think is an important aspect to understand, especially when seeing such a large number there. But as I mentioned, we are always still looking for opportunities to budget reductions as well, where they make sense, right? We have, the largest piece of this is the separation incentive plan. If you remember, um, the board did approve for us to do this last summer. Uh, we executed this a year ago, and the intent was over uh multiple years achieving the savings from that program. So this is a continued savings um achieved by that program. Uh, we are also looking at budget adjustments for some of the campuses that are enrollment-based. Um, and then I also mentioned that we do have other funds outside of the main operating fund, right? And in those funds, we are also watching the revenues there as well. So as revenues have changed, in truth, in this current environment decreased in those funds, we are also decreasing the expenditure budgets for those operations as well. Um, and just others uh opportunities identified, uh, this where we have eleven point seven million in budget reductions to help us offset this forty million. So that's where we have net budget additions of twenty-nine million. And as I mentioned, right, so to really help try to tie everything together, net budget additions of twenty-nine million. We had the new resources of twenty-five point five million, right? So with that difference, uh, the three and a half million use of cash reserves. And I am on to the last slide here, so what comes next? I know that was a lot, um, but there are certainly next steps to this budget. So today was, June budget workshop is generally when I do this in-depth presentation of the budget to the board. Uh, from here, we go build the detailed hundred-plus-page budget report. Um, and that will be released to the board on August fifth. Um, early August is when we received the certified values from the appraisal districts. Um, and then we'd like to propose August eleventh. I'm, I, I think we're proposing a, a delay.
Normally, it would be on August the fourth, but we um, we need time to get the budget together after we need more time, more time than we've had before, so we'd like to move that back to the eleventh, and then get back on a regular schedule in September, where we go the first Thursday, like we, we, we got out of cycle and because of COVID. And so, but if we could do August the eleventh, that would help with the preparation of the budget book, which is important, so. And that'll give us time, and that'll give you time to review everything.
Before she wraps up, could I ask a question, or are you finishing up?
I think the, if I could, just the last thing I wanted to mention in this timeline is even once the board considers and, you know, if it chooses to adopt the budget in August, following that, um, to execute the budget, there would still be uh votes that the board has to take regarding the tax rates. Um, there's two items in September, uh, voting on the proposed tax rate. There will be a couple of public hearings, and then October, a meeting to vote on the rate itself. Um, and so that is the next steps here for our budgeting process, yes.
Good, thank you, could you go, would you go back to slide forty-one for just a second, please? All right, so Baker Hughes Oil Rig Lease, four hundred thousand dollars. That makes me wonder, you know, if that's a reflection of a corporate program that we don't, that we don't have demand for now, uh, or how did we get there? But then let me, let me take another step. Then it made me wonder, uh, I, I want to be assured that we're, that we're going to continue to fund everything that we've said we would fund in the past, the fire center at Kingwood, you know, whatever else at other, other campuses.
Yeah, so would you mind um moving that up a little bit? So in reverse order, you, you, our plans are to fund everything that we funded, that's what we were trying to do is get money back in the budget that where we reduced, so part of that, the strategy this time, and on the, can you repeat the first?
Uh, and sorry, I had this away from me. Um, so I want to make sure, when I saw the Baker Hughes Oil Rig Lease, that made me wonder, is that a reflection of a particular program, a corporate partnership? And then it also made me wonder, a bigger uh picture, if you will, I need a re- not a need, uh, I'd like to, it would be nice to know if we uh are continuing to fund everything we've said we would fund that we have underway. For instance, the Health Science Health Profession Center at Kingwood, the fires, the demonstration.
Yes.
Burn building, that's right, that we have, and I don't want to leave any campus out, but the Kingwood project's just come.
Yeah, and yes, to answer the last part of it first, so Baker Hughes, for example, was, um, you know, we were using that to train oilfield workers and people working on the rigs. And we've gone back and forth with that, you know, at one time, we were, we were planning on building our own rig when, when, that was when uh, oil was a hundred dollars a barrel, then it dropped down to twenty-seven, we decided that we can't count on that. And then every time we decide one way or another, then oil goes the opposite way. So we decided though, and what's happening in the oil business right now is they're telling us they want people trained on computers. They can have one person monitor six or seven rigs, and they sit there in a computer room. So that's what we're doing right now, is training more on simulation than we are. Then they, then they call the crews to come out and do the rigs, it's, it's a, it's the role of technology, it's really, so we don't need that. Um, we, we, we talked a lot about this, uh, lease, we have a really, we thought we had a really good uh situation out there, we did. That's a top-quality position, I mean, a facility out there, but we don't, we're not training people like that anymore. So it's more on the technology side, so, but we are funding everything. All the uh programs that we had funded before are planned on funding, that's what we're doing, and starting in this budget. We're, we're adding more money back in the budget to, to catch up again, so.
Okay, so is that gonna be a combination of operations and, and bond programs? So, yes, any impact, as we've gone through the budget today, any negative impact on capital projects anywhere?
No, um, we still, the only, the only thing I would add is inflation. If inflation is chewing us up on the budget, on the construction budget, so we're trying to move those along. We have lost almost forty, over forty percent of our purchasing power since two thousand fourteen. Now, having said that, we had a delay of a little over a year when, after all the hurricanes, and we had COVID, which was almost a year and a half delay. Uh, we had to freeze, we've had a number of different issues to go along with that, but uh we've been making adjustments, so we went back, we reduced the size of some of the buildings when they came in, and then we added more money back. So we've got a couple of projects underway right now, I think we're near the end, except we have Tom Ball and then some, uh, I think we're getting ready, they've already broken ground over your facility, and uh, that fire, we've, that'll be, we've already let the project, the contract over your fire facility. And then we've gone back to do some renovations, which are a little different. But uh, this inflation piece, the only thing to answer your question, the only thing that's set us, is the inflation and the cost on some of the facilities. We've had to rethink the size of some of those facilities, so.
Good, thank you, and, and let me just publicly thank you, I know the trustees appreciate what you and your team have done. Um, sitting here in a policymaker's position, it's gonna be easy to approve the budget, from my perspective. Uh, you've got reduc-, you have reductions, now you've thought through almost every aspect of the operation, and I think it's very sound, and I compliment the administration, your team.
Thank you.
We would like, if you've got any, I mean, you can send Jennifer notes directly, you can send them to me, send them to whoever you want to, if we have specific questions about the budget, we'd be more than happy to give you more detail, and we'll follow up on the enrollment issues that you raised, but uh we're trying to be as transparent and clear about where the money is going as we possibly can, so if you need detail, we'd be glad to give that to you.
Any other discussions for this meeting?
That we had, um, we anticipated that you might ask some questions, so we put that in the backside of the program, you're not, but you're not supposed to see that.
Trustees, there are two other slides here, budgeting faculty ratios as measurement of cash reserves.
Yeah.
Sorry, but I actually read it.
That was me trying to manage time, not sure if there would be time for those, but in case that did come up as a topic.
I have no questions.
We spent a lot of time thinking, well, he's gonna ask this question, and she's gonna ask that question, so we're trying to get that ready, but, so.
It's there if you want it.
Any other discussions for this uh meeting? Jennifer, thank you very much, great job.
Very much, I appreciate your time.
There's no other, there are no other discussions, then I'm going to adjourn this meeting, thank you. Yeah, we'll come back at five o'clock, which is roughly seven minutes, so.
Thank you all for working on the budgets out there, by the way.